So, we are ready for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
So, a second. I don't mind, would you carry this discussion and then propose?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. A couple of items, or one in particular, that I am particularly interested in. I have not had an opportunity to look at it. It shows up on the consent agenda as the United Way's legislative platform. Twelve point one. Until we get a chance to see that with adequate review time, we actually need to make a discussion. I would request that we pull this consent agenda into our table, decide if we want further meeting, or we can have a discussion on it tonight, make a discussion, I might be able to that.
Personally, I would prefer to make a discussion on it.
And I will offer a motion, and a substitute motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion to accept the agenda in a second. So, we're going to have a substitute motion to accept the agenda without twelve, by moving twelve point one to the discussion item. Is there a second to that? Okay. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
The vote is open. All right, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, ready for school highlights.
Good evening, our first highlight this evening is to recognize one of our outstanding students who led us in the pledge of allegiance so well. I'd like to ask at this time for school administration to first come up, and if there's a staff member or a coach that they'd like to introduce our student highlight for this evening, we'll leave it to our school administrator to do that. So, Mr. Robbins and Ms. Schreiner, will you please come forward? And either one of you can introduce your student, and if there is a staff member or a coach to say, do it.
I made Ms. Schreiner come up even though she can't speak at all. She's got one of those voice things where she just squeaks, but she's the one closest, closest to Lemmy Lemmy. And we call him Lemmy Lemmy because I can't pronounce his last name. He has been truly a gift for us this year. Just one of those kids, you walk in at the end of the year, you have no idea what the future holds, and then there's Lemmy, who just makes everything better. He smiles all the time, he's happy all the time, he's a good student, he's serious, he's dedicated, yet funny, and you knew the guy could run. He's the only guy in Landon who has permission to run down the halls whenever he wants. When he's hopping his crockery, he sends in slips and they come back immediately because Lemmy runs. I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Schreiner, introduce him.
Come on up, Lemmy. And I just need to add the positive addition that he and his family have been to Landon Middle School. They joined us last year, and again, we weren't sure what to expect because he was so shy when he got to us. Not anymore. Lemmy is not only an amazing runner, he's also an amazing soccer player, so please look for him, he'll be in the Olympics one day, I just know it, just know it. Lemmy?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate all the things you guys have done for me. Yeah, I'm a real shy guy.
Actually, what I should have said is, Lemmy was grand cross-country at Landon and broke high school records as an eighth grader. Amazing, amazing talent. But he participated in a national cross-country event in Kentucky. The school, his family took him to Kentucky, we kind of got behind and supported him, we bought him some new shoes so he could really run. And he took seven out of 367 runners. He's absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
And it says this year that you took seventh at the nationals, but then you took first place overall. So, again, congratulations. And so, you seem to first place overall.
My teacher.
And then who do you have with you? Do you have family members that you want to introduce?
Yeah, my dad and my mom. All right, I've got my coach Palmer and Ms. Schacher and Ms. Davidson, sorry, Ms. Schacher. And teacher, Ms. Rento too.
So, for our coaches that are not, could you please join us?
Lemmy's actual coach from our school this year, he was homesick today and was unable to make it, but Ms. Weber is as proud of him as anyone.
So, we are so proud to, because Beacon Public Schools recognizes Lemmy Ray, National Cross-Country Center Six, 2018, congratulations. And we ask that you stay around for just a moment because we'll be taking a picture with our full board. Again, congratulations.
I just want to reiterate what everybody else said, how great a kid he is, and when I first saw his smile, I was just, it was contagious, just absolutely likable as a baby, and I was lucky enough to have him for track last spring. And I know when I first was introduced to him, he loved to run, and he's a great soccer player, and he loved to play soccer. And we talked a little bit about Kip Kino, and I said, and he knew who his native countryman was, and lo and behold, his first mile that he ever ran for us was five thirty-five miles, so, very impressive.
We're gonna ask for more high school credit classes at the middle school because we're not letting them.
Our next award is a special award, and I'll give Ms. Kruger, who takes the pictures as well. Come on up. Because she and Ms. Carter, please come forward, do so much with United Way. And so, it would only be appropriate that if they would like to join us, to come on up. And the United Way to Pick the Campaign is wrapping up, and while I can share a lot about the fundraisers, these are the people boots on the ground doing the work. So, I'm gonna turn it over between Ms. Kruger and Mrs. Carter, and then Ms. Kruger will share the amount collected, which United Way doesn't know yet. So, I will hand this to Ms. Kruger, and then Ms. Carter, if you'd like to say a few words about United Way, you'd rather not, okay, then Ms. Kruger will do the rest, and then give you the...
So, every year, our district with United Way is one of the campaigns that we support and focus, they give so much back to our district through a number of means, including early education at Heinrich and Sheldon, as well as operating achievement, making sure that our kids are staying on track. And so, we're great supporters of United Way, and they got back to us as well. And so, every year we do employee campaigns where employees can make donations out of their paychecks, they can write checks, they can do events to raise money. So, this year, some of the events we did included a Halloween party, we had sumo wrestling, Somebody Kissed a Pig, so a number of things across the district to raise money, and I don't think anyone in this room kissed a thing, but to raise money for United Way. This is my third year of chairing for the district, and I am so excited, kind of hinted to them that we have exceeded what we did last year. We set a new goal this year to raise fifty thousand dollars, and I will tell you, Marie Carter was a huge piece of that, and she put in some new things for us this year as our campaign investor, the help keep people excited, and so, we set fifty thousand, that's more than we did last year, hopefully we can do that. And we did that, and we made that.
And before you say the amount, she's decided she wants to make a few comments.
It'll be very few. I gotta tell you, when I first started doing this, I was drafted, if Mr. Robbins remembers, he said, "What are you doing?" I said, "Well, I'm working in labor right now." And he said, "I've got a project for you, do you wanna do it?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "Wait, before I say yes, what is it?" And then he told me, goes, "Yes, I can do that." I had so much fun doing this, I asked Angel, I said, "Will you guys let me come back next year, as long as I can have the school business?" And he said, "Yes, I'll be back next year." We already got some things planned for next year, but I had a lot of fun, thank you.
Now, Ms. Kruger's gonna share how much, Mrs. Schacher, come on up.
So, from last year to this year, we raised an additional seven thousand four hundred dollars. We exceeded our goal of fifty thousand dollars this year for a grand total of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents. I was confident we hit fifty-three, but we just barely missed it. So, with that, it's...
Did she go there? We're breaking up history with the board as well, so, I think that is, is that the last highlight? So, with that final highlight, United Way members, please stand and stay up front because our board is gonna join you from right on the high shoes in the photo as well.
We're taking it to the main row.
I hope they'll accept it after hours.
Mr. Robbins, would you wanna join with your board? Ms. Kruger, did you wanna get in the photo? Mr. Galloway?
She should be in the photo.
She should be in the photo.
You all wanna take a comment? Sure. And while our board is still standing, because then we'll have our students come on up, but if you'd like to say a comment to the audience?
I just wanna say, thank you so much. You guys don't just donate money to United Way, you volunteer in so many other ways, through volunteer efforts for sitting on panels, sitting on our committees, our investment committees, on our board of directors, all of the work that you do for children. Topeka Public Schools is an absolutely outstanding group of individuals, and we cannot thank you enough for everything you do for our community, so.
All right, and our Landon family, and anyone else, coaches that want to join in the photo? Congratulations. Not bad, you wanna come on either side? Grandma, you wanna come on the side? Is everybody good? Coaches, did you wanna come up? Dr. McDonald, can you spell focused that picture on one of the cameras? All right.
Dr. Middleton?
Just quickly, I want to acknowledge, when we recognized Lemmy, some of the cross-country in the middle school was something we took on and we proposed several years ago, we had a budget, and Coach Palmer in the audience, I think he's probably recruiting, I see the purple and white, speak less cross-country shirt on, but he wrote us a note and said, "Hey, can we start cross-country again?" And just wanna commend you for your initiative again to reinstitute cross-country and other sports in middle school level, so thank you for that. And then, and then the administration for being able to rapidly pick it in gear and have done this year, so, good job on every part.
Okay, next on the agenda, public communication, do you have that? So, we're ready to dispose of the business by consent.
Request, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Sorry to be, quickly about this, wrong job, but the one item that I do support, I just want to make sure I fully understand what it is, and that is, I ask that we hold that item back on the calendar, so we can have, I just ask one question on it.
It's twelve point two.
Um, it's what? Twelve point two.
Twelve point, no, it's twelve point one now because I have to move the item down to discussion.
Correct. And so...
And the request is?
So, Mr. Woods, would, you'd be okay if Reverend Williams addressed your issue? So, let's, so do you want him to do that before we have a motion?
No, I mean, I'm just simply requesting that we just remove consent calendar, blow consent calendar, we discuss it, and right after we're in the room, we do, ask the one question.
Okay, so, you're...
We could just do it, right, we're gonna discuss this, if you want to do that, just say...
Yeah, we can discuss the...
In a second, and then are any questions of discussion?
Well, we can technically, according to our rules, we're not supposed to ask questions on anything.
But you can discuss, any discussions.
I suggest a buyer of those, President. I know it.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion, whatever motion you want.
Mr. President?
No, no, I just gotta say, as we're supposed to do, you know, you remember, if they have any question, but I didn't think it asked for anything to be removed, so, I'm asking for that.
Still, in the form of a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent, with the exception of twelve point two, which we renew, which offered for discussion later in the meeting.
Well, it's now twelve point one.
Twelve point one, I'm sorry, as President, and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project at first in conference for the mayhem of board.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, we're gonna vote?
The vote is open. Outlooks are in, motion carries unanimously.
So, next up is the superintendent's report.
Actually, we got a question on that.
Open to discussion?
Yep.
So, at this time, it's Ms. Sharp and Mrs. Warren coming forward, we are so excited with the, as we pull the PowerPoint up, we're so excited about our two-year here at Shainer Early Childhood Center, Ms. Sharp has done a phenomenal job under leadership and oversight in our first tuition-based blended model state pre-K program. As the PowerPoint comes forward, Ms. Sharp will walk you through some data to look at, and then open it at the end for questions. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sharp.
Thank you, good evening. I am excited to share with you some updates today around the strategic plan, we will look at some information that supports Objective One Point One, looking at Fanta-Simpinell K through three, looking at kindergarten readiness, making sure that the kids are prepared and ready, and then looking specifically at the preschool monitoring system and the data that we've collected over the last three school years. When we were preparing for our presentation this evening, Mr. Kip had found some information back from 2002 that was highlighting some areas of focus for the district, and one of those was differing curriculum resources, different prioritization of skills, and various levels of success with the kids being ready for kindergarten, along with having some difficulty comparing assessment results across the district. And when we're having discussions, we're really like, we're having a lot of those same items as concerns right now. So, we have been intentionally thinking of ways that we can streamline what early childhood looks like across the district. Some of the things that we've been doing is looking at the ASQ screening is now happening, parents' teachers in the early childhood classrooms, and now with our kindergartners. So, we will be able to, as a district, be able to look more thoroughly at that data and look at trends. At Shainer and Sheldon, we're really excited to be working with Kathleen Layne in piloting the SRSS behavior screener that is developmentally appropriate and geared towards preschool students, that's something that we haven't had previously. So, again, something to streamline what we're doing across our early childhood system. Shainer has piloted a progress report of some of this stuff here, really worked on comparing that, the kindergarten, they use the kindergarten progress report as their starting point, and then you start design map to tailor it to pre-K assessment. We've got to look at what measurement are we using consistently across all of our programs so that we can really dig into data and have a reliable nationally known assessment to use. And we're looking, working on the blended funding and exploring what that can look like in our system, we would like to see some blending of our PIP classrooms to incorporate more Gen Ed students, that's something that we have to look at. So, we're working with KSDE, Dr. Harrington and I, about how we can make that happen. This slide shows some data from the preschool monitoring system, three years' work. The literacy is showing tasks that the students can complete. So, with this tool, there can be some variance with how it is assessed, the teachers are looking for, can the kids perform the task seventy-five percent of the time? So, they're looking at, can they name author, illustrator, can they answer questions about the text, identify character in setting? The next graph is counting, just oral counting, this is assessing one to twenty. The learning is the approaches to learning, and really, this is almost a social skills component with, can they follow directions, can they attend to tasks, and regulate emotions? The last category is motor skill, and that is anywhere from walking upstairs one foot at a time to cutting and writing. This is an overview of the Fanta-Simpinell.
Ms. Sharp, Mr. Woods have a question?
On that last chart, this is for clarification of that, this is not the same class, right? This is just the years preschoolers in 2016 versus the years preschoolers from 2017 and then 2018, it's not the same class as the...
Correct. Three different groups. This is Fanta-Simpinell data for the elementary schools, you can look, each year is shown, so you can see the beginning of the year compared to the end of the year and the growth highlighted. Fanta-Simpinell is a tool that really is measuring their fluency comprehension, and is a tool that can be used for teachers to guide where students are at in their guided reading instruction. And then teachers are doing running records frequently and using that data to move students through level tests. This is a tool for the beginning, middle, and end of the year to kind of spot check, are we teaching kids on their instructional level?
And Ms. Sharp on the Fanta-Simpinell instrument, is that instrument a comprehensive literacy instrument, or is that really just a spot check done by the teacher, and the teacher determines where they are? And what other instruments are you using that they might be able to expect in the future that's comprehensive?
This is one measurement for classroom teachers to use. Teachers are also running formative assessment data cycles where they're targeting in on standards, and then we're also assessing standards through Scantron. So, they use all of those data points to inform their instruction.
Ms. Sharp, is that all grades for those schools, or what grades do those have?
It is K five.
And Mrs. Sharp for Fanta-Simpinell, what grades is that focused on as well?
K five.
And then Scantron?
It's first through fifth.
And then what was the other instrument that you referenced, and what grades are those?
Common formative assessments and teachers running data cycles, and that should be occurring pre-K through five, that's our goal, we're working on it. All right, this is just some information to highlight what's been happening across our different programs. You heard and celebrated the Blue Ribbon Affiliate with parents' teachers servicing over two hundred families. And one of my goals is really looking at, what does that transition look like when they are a TPS family and parents' teachers moving to an early childhood setting or kindergarten, and working with Nicole Fairley to have an intentional transition between parents' teachers and the rest of our program. I think that's one advantage of having early childhood and elementary combined this year, is really being able to close the gaps and have some more seamless transition there. United Way is a big supporter of our parents' teachers programs, and the other funding is through KSDE and the block grant. Sheldon, we're serving 221 students again, we just renewed that grant, and we're super excited to go through on the first cycle of Ms. Norton, Ms. Newfeld, and I working on that grant. We have a lot of amazing business partners that really... We have a lot of amazing business partners that really believe in Sheldon and get in there and support. There's been a lot on social media over the last few days. Pine Ridge Prep, again, that's another one of our Parents' Teachers sites. We service 51 students there partnering with Community Action, Topeka Housing Authority. And again, I talked a little bit earlier today about the Early Learning Communities Grant and the intentional planning and supporting of the whole child with Community Action. And then Shainer. So excited to have a blended funded model where we have tuition and state pre-K. We've got 48 students. And we have two model classrooms where parents can come in and be able to see what's happening in the classroom, and we can use that for professional development with teachers. And it will be wonderful with onboarding new staff and being able to use that as a training opportunity. We are able to serve many of our TPS families through Shainer. We are excited to now be partnering with The Y in expanding the hours. And Shainer will, beginning in January, be open from seven to six. So I really think that will help increase our enrollment. Ms. Warren says that the applications have really been coming in. So that is really exciting. And the last thing that we wanted to highlight this evening was our attendance at the elementary level. This is something that we're really proud of. The principals have been very intentional about focusing on attendance. We've had district support coming in and really monitoring how we're tracking that in our school, and also being intentional with our mental health team and supporting students. When they haven't been to school in two days, someone's at the house knocking on the door. No one answers. They're going back to the next stage and just being really intentional about how do the kids in school? And I think that that's something that I also want to really focus on with early childhood, that if they're in the program and in slot, that we're making sure that their attendance is strong because we're starting that pattern early. Any questions?
Questions? Dr. Porter.
One of the early slides summarizing issues from 2002 that specifically mentioned curricula. So you talked about changes planned regarding assessment. What are you thinking about with that? Where are we with consistency across programs and schools?
So we have now the MIADs happening across all of our settings with the exception of Sheldon. So we will work with Head Start on what they're recommending for that so that we can make a good decision. But we have to find something that will be all of those grant requirements. You know, that's another part of it is, like at Pine Ridge, there's four sources of funding. So finding something that meets the needs of all of the different grants. So this year, well, I guess it was the previous year, we added the CR Success Jump Start. So that's a consistent item that is now happening in the early childhood rooms. And now Yurica Mass is happening. We have some that Head Start uses high scope curriculum and the state pre-K rooms and preschool intervention rooms are using. It's lasted a good day. So we will continue to look at whether we want that to look like moving forward to ensure better consistency across our programs.
I mean, the key for me is, I don't ever want us making decisions just based on, because this is where the money is. We've talked about that in the past, about not chasing grants. You know, and hopefully, as our state funding becomes more stable, maybe we have more ability to make decisions based solely on what we feel is best for the kids. Maybe that all of those different materials end up teaching the same standards and that that's okay, and that's fine with me because there's more than one way to approach the concept, right? But I just hope we keep an eye on that.
I, because I think that's where we get into the trap of, then it changes two years later, then it changes, and one changes, I know, at a different time.
It's hard on teachers.
Yeah. And I, your comments about really being able to expand the funding at the state level, we were able to add additional state pre-K funded slots this year. And I think that there's starting to be some traction with that. I know that the audit was a little bit different this year with them asking, how many kids could have qualified? And what does that look like?
Other questions? Mr. Woods.
I guess, one quick question and then a couple of comments. So the slide that I asked about earlier, it's pretty interesting. These are all unique students, you know, each of those years. But it almost looks as if, especially in the literacy piece, if we had done something, you'd show like progress. I guess this means these students are showing a better prepared, or what? What? Am I misunderstanding?
Well, I hope that it is showing that we're making progress. You know, maybe we could attribute some of that to the implementation of CR Success last year and seeing that big jump.
And certainly, I guess if we're serving more people in more locations and with some of our three programs, Parents' Teachers, ideally, I guess we'd see that kind of increase year after year. But it's really great to see it here. And I guess, I'll be honest, and I'm asking these questions because that's what I think someone will highlight. But I applaud your work, very good work, you're a great job. So that was my other question. Really, my comment is just, it's exciting to be here in this building. And we started talking about a facility for early childhood education, what, in 2007? So it's really exciting to actually be here and to see this thing come to fruition. It's such an amazing building, beautifully put together. And we applauded the architect, and I've already said enough. Said a lot of good things. We probably can't say enough about the work that the administration has done to help us bring this to fruition and the work that you all are doing against him. So thanks, and excited about the next 10 years that we can.
I also just want to say too that it's been really fun for me, who had primarily just been in that elementary role. You know, I had pre-K in my building, but it has been really fun to dig in and see what's happening in the different early childhood classrooms. We have a lot of really strong teachers that really know developmentally what they need to be doing with kids. And I've been really proud to see what's happening in our early childhood centers.
Anything else? So we have one action item. 20.1, approval of high school course change request. Will that move that we approve the item 20.1, the high school course change? What is this present? Any discussion? Ready to vote? So we have four discussion items. Why don't we, yeah, why don't we discuss originally 12.1, which I don't know what number it is now?
It's 21.2.
21.2. So it's the...
The One United Voice?
Yeah, One United Voice. So... Yeah, go ahead and discuss. So I wanted to have an opportunity to talk about this and look at it. As you know, this is an area where a lot of us have very deep interest, and it's something that the board has traditionally been deeply involved with developing. I hadn't actually had a chance to look at this yet. I think I checked earlier in the week and then checked yesterday and hadn't, wasn't able to see it posted. I understand that's because we just received kind of the final edits of it. So now that we've got it, I'd love to have an opportunity to have somebody walk us through it, kind of rework us on, especially call out the changes, I guess, that other districts had a chance to already make.
So Mrs., this year, we, we're not individuals that created the One United Voice. Shani, although the items on the document are the same as last year, there was one suggested addition. And Mrs. Kruger will share which district is taking the lead, and she's received this document that she just passed out to you.
So please note, it doesn't actually print outside on the wall. It's just made of files, so it, we just, it's not going to be like that. The changes for this year, this is actually exactly the same as last year with a few minor changes. Shani is taking the lead this year on this document. On the front page, you'll have is the combined facts for the county. So those were adjusted to reflect the total FTE, total payroll, student enrollment numbers. That was all changed based on what each district submitted. And the only other change aside from what we did last year are obviously changing the school year. But then on the inside page, under school safety, that piece was added. So it reads, "School safety, we support local, not state, control of school safety and security measures." And that's the only change, minus photos and the design from last year.
And the photos and design and everything else was submitted by the district leading the document this year?
Yes, that's correct.
I asked, I guess, how was it developed this year? Who took the lead? And how did, right, I guess, how did it, did it pass and then was it their turn?
They asked if they could take the lead on it, and so we said, sure. But like I said, they really didn't change anything except the design of it. But they can make that request. They got a new communications person, where she never had that position. And so they wanted to have get on the outlook and we did work on it. It also will print bigger than how it is. It will actually be on that bigger sheet of paper, so it won't read too small.
Were we involved in any of the discussion of the kind of what it will answer?
I, I know that it had gone back and forth a little bit, but they sent it to us, made our the adequate school safety measure, and I couldn't speak to conversations with superintendents or board presidents, but from a communication standpoint, when I called, they already had that addition on it.
And so from the superintendent's meeting that we had regarding the One United Voice, our, my agreement was that the document that we had last year, which I thought was a very good document, was one that we started to be comfortable with, the format of that document and the, there was an inquiry, which told me generally for each year about the topics, you know, that were listed last year, if those were still issues, that, you know, from early childhood to funding, were those still issues? And that we would each bring that back to our board. Originally, Ms. Wister received a document as well that had Topeka public schools separate from the other districts. And I inquired about that. And the inquiry that we made, and I asked Mrs. Kruger to check into that as well, and it was shared that generally, in past years, Topekas have their own time. However, since it's been One United Voice, we've always come together, at least since I've been here. And so I shared that we'd like to remain as a unit, as one unit, although another district has taken the lead in creating the document, at least the formatting of the document. Mrs. Kruger had stayed in contact with that district, the superintendent and the communications person, related to making sure we receive information as they are, you know, taking the opportunity to create the document. In part, I believe, as Mrs. Kruger mentioned, they would like to have an opportunity to take the lead. Since they do have staff that can now do that beyond that. So that time that we had reserved originally, we now list it as one group to speak. Mr. Dr. Morrison, I shared that with him, which we confirmed at the KAB conference that that date would be upcoming, and that date is pushed to later in December. And that new date and time, Mrs. Kruger, and December 12? It's December 12 at 10:30.
It's on the calendar that members have in front of them.
Just as a side comment to, the nice of the pictures were more reflective of all students in our district.
So we submitted, they had a different photo in the document. We asked for changes and submitted our own photo. Our photo is the one in the middle, and the inside is the young man doing robotics. Part of that is we wanted to show the diversity of our district, but we also wanted to show an academic piece to our district, which the original photo did not have, that they had placed in there.
I may have a couple of suggestions or points. Can I get them to you? I don't want to gum it up if we're going to have a conversation with legislators on next Wednesday. However, I just got it, so. So maybe a little late. I mean, mainly, I think if there is ever a year to say that we very fully, we have language here similar to the language that's in KSP, which is what I found. This is the year, what you have is additional weapon. And basically, if you get a favorable assessment by the course, what will be acceptable and acceptable. If you can't do it, this is the year to do it as soon as possible. I think this would be the good, it would be the point of watch or something. We can, I suppose, that we'll analyze. That's just my suggestion. I will send you some language.
And Mr. Woods, I received a correspondence recently as well regarding the, what each district might want to speak about so that one person isn't speaking for another pool group, but rather we each have an opportunity to share it. And so the points that you would like for me to share, or Dr. Morrison, additionally, I shared that teacher recruitment and continued funding for teacher recruitment would be essential, and ask for Mr. Minkie and Mr. Robbins to be there so we can address finance and as it relates to, you know, having adequate funding. Those were areas I shared an interest in, but we can certainly look at.
So, yeah, I don't know exactly how we want to do it. I don't know that this is something that we absolutely have to have a vote on today. I would say you're probably not comfortable voting on it today yet. I might share some suggestions with you. We can circulate it, or we can give you language and give massage it with the general themes and incorporate those themes. I'm sure it would be that down the road. I will try and give you something important for you to close business tomorrow.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Kirk.
Just an observation, this is really hard to read. Yeah.
That, you know, PowerPoint?
Yeah, I mean, it is really hard to color it. Yeah, I mean, it is really hard to color it with the, the, the. I mean, it always makes it as though those are not important, because you can't, you have to struggle to read them. That's just an observation. And maybe because I'm old, but I don't think I'm the only one who has to read classes.
So why not know that's really important?
Yeah.
I think part of this was the fact that they wanted to put it on one sheet here.
Well.
And, oh, I'm not saying you're wrong. I think that's probably the reason. Okay, thank you, Ms. Kruger. So, our next discussion item will be 12.2, which is approval of membership in the Council of Urban Wards of Education. And Mr. Williams?
All right, goodbye. And so, um, if, uh, the board, uh, please, is, you know, in addition to the Magno Award, the Council of Urban School, uh, Boards of Education also has their award, which the largest districts generally in the nation are. So like this year, individuals that won that award include Charlotte McElverve, Texas. And, um, because it is at this point in the year, the remaining amount of the cost is prorated significantly to see if that's a service and set of resources that you might have an interest in for future. So for from now to the end of the year, um, it's approximately, it's a hundred dollars a month, or it's eighty dollars overall, somewhere thereabout, um, eight, about eight hundred and forty dollars. So when we look at that monthly prorater's rate, um, in terms of, uh, staff development, periodicals, and information for the Equity Council overall, it would serve a purpose in providing some of those resources. And any workshop you would go to would be reduced to the cost as a result. At the end of this year, if it's something that you, uh, at, at some conversation with Reverend Williams, who recognized at his new role, that we want part of the Council of Q. Um, and so if it's something that at the end of the year, you know, once you hear the full cost for a full year, that has an interest, we would have the opportunity, uh, to at least share what, um, resources we can advantage of from an Equity Council standpoint. Currently, in terms of, uh, we're not members of the National Association of Public School Educators. We're not members of Q. So there's not a lot of, and I'd like for us to be, uh, at least look at, um, uh, a membership as something that represents our Latino and Hispanic population as well. Just so that we have adequate, uh, professional development opportunities for not just for members, but for teachers in all of those areas. So we're still gonna bring to you, like, there's something in, um, the Hispanic area as well in terms of being a member. But the dual language group has a membership in that piece. And they just came back from the Gomez Gomez Conference. So we feel like we have some pieces with that, uh, not as much in some of the other areas. So that would be the rationale of adding it on this year. Often, professional development, that we add, but it falls directly over the professional development office or if it's grant funded, we put it under consent. Uh, in this case, uh, my apologies for not having greater godwile, I should have, have been needed for that. But I put it under consent as we would normally do PD. But this is PD representing Q. Reverend Williams, is there anything you want to add in terms of interest or desire for Q that I may have missed?
I think it's a core intention of their primary emphasis is, uh, taking the issues and developing resources. They have an annual conference. So, it's considered to be an annual conference.
Assuming we have funding left in our board... Board funding, right, to cover that normally, but wouldn't that cost come out of that? Yes.
Yes, and now members who...
Yeah. Very good.
It's less than nine hundred.
Ms. Kurt.
Now, when we're talking about urban, um, large urban districts, we're not really large, so we get kind of sued by some of them, but the key piece there, they're looking, they're, they do look at, and they look at urban districts, districts that are heavily segregated, and ask where, and, and, and everything from the west also certainly has a few changes. So, are they looking at all of those groups unless, uh, are they just looking at none of that from the urban groups?
It can be all of them. So, like, for example, Houston High School, uh, which is probably ten times our size, is predominantly Hispanic. Um, when we first visited, um, the College for All program, uh, and our Scott dual language staff member visited that, they visited a school, PHJA, that is, um, in, um, in Texas as well, right on the border. So, uh, which, when we say urban, it really represents more the diversity of all, uh...
And that's what I was really announcing, making sure that we're really talking about all the diversity.
It's diversity of all, but we're most excited about equity from all, or our ends, uh, our ALL population as well, of the tremendous monetary sources there, and Native American peace as well that they have, so we're excited about, but we'll get a chance for the first time and see what it's like. And we feel like if it's not as, uh, you know, if it's not as cool as we like and robust, then we certainly can, you know, rethink that maybe.
That just might just start again, the other question. Thank you.
Mr. Williams. So, I'll state to the record, I fully support joining Q. Uh, knew what it was, I got to go to the, the Equity Institute that they were a co-sponsor of before NSBA's conference last year. Wonderful opportunity. In fact, we tried to mimic it this week, year, stole some of their ideas, and used NSBA, uh, Q, uh, and, uh, like caucus of school board members, uh, resources that they shared with us for our, uh, cultural proficiency seminar that Ms. Johnson and I attended. I wanted to ask a question, I wanted us to have this dialogue, uh, just 'cause I hadn't seen it, uh, before, it was only consented yet, so I didn't know if I'd missed it, or maybe it had occurred at the meeting that I was going, uh, for, uh, which unfortunately has been more than I'd like lately. But, uh, I'm certainly fully, uh, supportive of this, I am, and I think, uh, joining it will, will do us kind of good, and, uh, whenever we are ready, um, at the next meeting or whatever, unless that's too late, uh, prepared, prepared if it needs to be an emergency motion or something. Uh, if you can share with us, I'll be prepared to offer, uh, to vote for this. Uh, we could, uh, change this to an action item and vote to accept it. Mr. President, uh, I move, uh, that the board declare emergency and suspend the rules and change either, is it twenty point two now?
Um, twenty one point four.
Twenty, twenty one point four, uh, from a discussion item to an action item, so that it may be voted on, uh, this evening. Second. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, second. So, any further discussion? Ready to vote?
You're gonna have to vote by hand.
All favor, referees here? All opposed, same thing?
Mr. President, I'm in for a review of the regulations presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. Any discussion? Ready to vote to, to accept? All favorites?
We do.
All votes. So, the other discussion item, uh, twenty one point one, first reading of proposed policy changes, Scope.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I believe you had received an email individually last week, uh, showing the same summary that was attached to, uh, four docs regarding proposed changes to, uh, the policies. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer any of those, and would also defer to members of the Policy Committee, if they can also be of assistance.
So, would any of the Policy Committee like to discuss anything? Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Just reading through, I noticed that some of the policies are pretty extensively changed, and then we definitely have a new one among them. Um, if you can give a synopsis behind the thought process of those, some of those major changes, and, um, let's give us some insight there.
Sure. Uh, so some of the ones that you can see substantial changes to, uh, the first one is the policy forty five sixty regarding conflicts of interest. We did previously have a conflicts of interest policy. Uh, these changes, um, are required by the Federal Uniform Grant Guidelines Regulations. You may remember last year when we were making policy changes, uh, there were other changes, um, that were made specifically to, uh, being compliant with those regulations. It's something that our, um, auditors are really requesting that we, um, kind of get moving on and doing that. So, these are form samples that we have received from an auditing group, uh, that we have, have adopted, or not adopted, or that we have, um, put into place, you know, reflecting to Pika Public Schools. So, that would be the first, uh, major change. Uh, the new one that you referred to would be policy sixty one thirty five regarding exemptions from required instruction. Uh, this would clarify client district practice, that if requested by a parent in writing, a student may be exempt from certain portions of required instruction for portions of curriculum because it conflicts with their beliefs, um, of either the student or the parent. So, that's the new one. Um, the student insurance is eighty three fifty. Uh, our, interestingly, our policy was less, was actually more intensive than our regulation, which usually is the other way around. So, we took some of the portions of the regulation, could have been the policy, um, and, and vice versa, but to just really clarify that the district does not provide student insurance, um, it was a little muddy, so we were cleaning that up. Um, I would say the, the other big change would be eighty four hundred. Uh, we had some, some questions last year regarding student trips, whether they be field trips, out of state trips, or federal, or, uh, getting late, sorry, um, or, um, out of the country travel, and how, you know, the processes we follow to ensure that those things can happen. And what we found is that there are three different policies, uh, that spoke to that, and if you didn't look at the right one, you weren't clear on how it was supposed to go. So, we combined, uh, were proposing to combine those three policies into one, which would be eighty four hundred, and we separated it out, so it was a little clearer, so you have, um, the first part would be, uh, school-sponsored activities, um, from local, uh, to, so in-state, out-of-state, and then international travel, uh, and then it's broken out by non-school sponsored. So, those would be the, the big changes, and again, if I missed anything, certainly would ask that the Policy Committee jump in and, and correct me, because I'm certainly happy to hear what they have to say, I'm sure you are too.
Anybody, anybody on the Policy Committee want to make any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
So, I, I, I wanted to put this in on, um, sixty one thirty five. Yes, sixty one thirty five, I got some new policies over there. Correct? Sixty one thirty five? Okay. And we had a discussion about opt-in, opt-out, uh, whether the school year has pertaining to different curriculum, specifically as pertaining to our, um, a new set of curriculum that's somewhat controversial. Um, and I think one of the things that I'm very concerned with from parents that address me is this opt-in, opt-out, uh, my, um, terminology. So, I noticed that it's not as intensive, I mean, it just, it's not specific using those terms, but at the end, the last sentence talks about this opt-out, and it can be somewhat confusing as to what opt-in-out actually means, although, you know, I'm reading through here, it seems like you dealt with some of the language, but my concern is that parents know, um, first of all, this piece that says schools will make the best efforts to identify and notify parents of the teaching materials, methods of instruction within that curriculum that may reasonably be, be seen to conflict with more ethical and religious conscience of individuals. And, you know, and I understand we're, we're talking policies, and we're some, a little more vague, but I, I, as a board member, am saying, what does it really look like for us as a district? Um, we talked about the sex ed curriculum, we talked about trying to go out in front and make sure parents really know what is going on, or what, what has changed in our curriculum, so they would prepare to address those kind of things. Um, but the word opt-out for one proves a bit of vagueness for me, and I wonder if so do our parents, and then the timeliness with which they have to respond to this opportunity to opt-out. Um, and that, and because sometimes we do actually, each and every school year, it starts in January, and there's a start in the beginning of September. Um, so those kind of, kind of concerns that come up for me as I read that policy, and would welcome any feedback.
Any comments from... I'm not, I'm not seeing any. So, Ms. Johnson, what would you, I mean, in a policy, you would think that there would not be specificity, specificity. And, and so, uh, I think, to me, it seems like this ought to be something either administrative or teachers should be able to communicate to parents.
Well, we've had that discussion, you know, what does that really look like for us to really go the extra mile specifically, but these are somewhat controversial? What does that look like to us, and then what does that look like to our parents? You know, one of those opportunities to really ensure that I, as a parent, see this information in a timely way, and can respond as, as has been outlined here in this policy? Do you have a way to...
But I could see how in, you know, totally different context, biologically, somebody didn't believe in Darwinism, didn't want their, to be Darwinist. So, um, I, you know, I find it somewhat difficult to be, I don't think district has to be specific, but I do think, um, schools that, on controversial issues, um, should inform parents. And I don't know whether that should be left up to individual schools or teachers or...
With my understanding, we are already having, um, parent information quizzes, where in January, where a women's sexuality, uh, program, am I correct?
Yes, those have been scheduled, um, for the eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second, so three separate instances. Um, Ms. Sandberg, who you met, uh, previously, will be facilitating those hour and a half of, uh, by thirty to seven, opportunities for our families, and then, um, they are working with, uh, communications company, Anne Lawrence, to produce, uh, a video that we can then put on our website. We've also had, um, she's been here three times to, uh, provide professional learning opportunities to our help teachers as well. And those things, those opportunities and things will continue. I know I had conversation with Ms. Kruger around how we promote those three parent meetings, and, um, have a website presence for the opportunities for parents, um, to get this information, both, uh, through coming to a meeting and through the video opportunity.
Are they on the website?
Yes, I just confirmed those winter. Um, we've been looking at different dates, the eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second. They are three consecutive Tuesdays.
January?
Yes, January.
Okay, isn't the curriculum supposed to start January?
No. No, that's when we were gonna, we were waiting until, um, the policy was reviewed, and then work towards, uh, parent meetings, and then start in late February, March, um, which is about the time we did it last year.
So, where...
I have not scheduled a specific location. Um, we can do one of two things, we can have three centrally located meetings, or we can have, uh, community-based at the various high schools. So, that's the kind of the conversation.
So, eight is a little more than... Eight is a little more than a month away, so I'm, I'm, as part of this whole, um, so we take on responsibility, let's get down in front of that, and give a few parents time to say, oh, I might have to go work for that, because, you know, this is important enough, and the one that we have the opportunity to give this information. Um, but are there any other things that we're doing to make sure that, you know, how are we getting that information up to parents besides the website?
Uh, the community, we looked at the community news. Um, previously, uh, we communicated through the high school newsletters and the parent portal, and through parent teacher conferences. All, again, opportunities that we will have prior to any student, um, participating in the coursework.
And so, then we go back to the policy, and, I mean, I know some issues are more controversial than others, um, but when you go back to the policy, I guess that's always my concern, is how we interpret, what is the appropriate, you know, and that's why we're just pushing ourselves to go the extra mile and make sure that families might actually have the opportunity to see this once or twice before it's time for women even, um, well, women have opportunity to get more information. Um, we don't feel like we're trying to push something without that, you know, except that whole trust factor, that we're always trying to be able to do to us and our families and children.
Thank you.
So, we'll, we'll address these, uh, at the next meeting. And, uh, second non-controversial thing is the proposed calendar for discussion. Yes, uh, item twenty one two, Ms. Wallace.
Okay, so, um, in front of you... The, uh... Survey data, um, there were two concerns that felt as if they needed to have some input from teachers. One was around Professional Development Day. Um, and we looked at two different dates, September thirtieth or October tenth. It was a pretty close, um, split, with October tenth receiving fifty one point six percent of the vote. And then the other conversation was, do teachers want their flex day and Professional Development Day after the winter break, or did they want to split them? That was overwhelming, with seventy seven point seven percent wanting their flex day and PD day to be after the winter holiday. So, this is the calendar that is in front of you, um, what, uh, Ms. Kruger put together based on that survey data. So, the proposed calendar, um, has teachers returning to duty on August sixth, kids returning on August thirteenth, um, then there are some, the, the two question, questions. This shows you that, um, the Professional Development Day is October tenth, followed by a flex day. We had initially planned to do that on the fourteenth, but that is the NUPSED conference, so we shifted that back. Um, and then the January time with the flex day being on the Friday, the fifth, Professional Development being on January sixth, and kids returning on January seventh. And it is always, um, uh, we always work really diligently to make sure that we are out before Memorial Day. I also noticed that spring break is pretty early on this calendar. Um, we did reach out to all the universities, and it is aligned with KU, KC, and Washington University. Question?
Actually, I always complain about the calendar, and I'm going to do it again, and we both know again. I just have a real problem with having the second of January off, and the rest of the world goes back to work on January second. You have those two days that teachers could have for their own, whatever, those two days, rather than on, than the sixth, when they tend to come back to a, a short week. And I just, it just seems a little concerned about academic learning. That to me is counterproductive. You've got the days in January after the holiday ends on January first, you have two days there that you could do your Professional Development, and your work days, and then we come back with a full week of school for kids. That is how, always my preference, and I always lose the battle. But I am going to continue to just have this battle, and say no again, because I think it's terrible that we do that. I don't know what it's like to think about late, uh, Memorial Day, um, having come from a part of the world where we went to school until June, so, um, I just, I just don't understand that really well, but, um, I do stay filled with I have concerns about getting a short week after coming off a two-week vacation, and we already have to spend a couple of days catching up. So, um, that's my complaint. It will be a complaint for the next panel we have.
I'd be giving one response to the way the calendar falls this year with not returning on the second, or if we return on the second, we could have a two-day week. We, um, have had some conversations around attendance being significantly lower.
We have a two-day week, not, not for kids.
It would be, no, we would have if we came back on the second, well, I guess we'd have our flex day and our PD day.
We have a flex day and a second, and then for kids.
We'd all be backed up one day.
Yeah. It's a full week for kids, rather than, yeah, you still have two days up, the teachers are not, that's, that's for two days, is my, my, so, anyway. I don't know what it does to the rest of the calendar, you know what? I just find it really bad for kids.
Any, uh, other discussions? All ready for board comments? Mr. Williams, down there. Ms. Johnson?
The only comments I would need to, uh...
Uh, thank everybody for, uh, for attending the KASU conference, uh, last weekend, I thought it was an excellent, uh, conference, um, but I really think that Pika Public Schools was so well represented there, uh, beyond having, you know, board members actually give presentations, I can, I gave one that was excellent, I think, said it by, uh, her in scope. Uh, we featured our board members, our staff, all the expertise we have on hand, uh, had many of our board members there participating. We also had our, we get to get our students in fine arts, so having, had a park who wowed the group, uh, a lot of those people came up and asked about those students and where they were from, and that they were, you know, like our, uh, elite, you know, collegiate choral type of group, and I said, oh, yes. And, uh, uh, having the drum line come in and actually start the, the meeting off right, uh, to get everybody really excited, uh, and everybody got a huge kick out of the, uh, Tika West, uh, ROTC gentleman, uh, in revolutionary period dress. Wow, he got a huge kick out of that, it was awesome. So, uh, thank you, guys, it was a great weekend, and, uh, there'll never be another one like it. Ms. Kurt?
No, that we all did it for him, right?
Exactly.
Absolutely. That's how I can get me to my one and only KASU conference, is Patrick, which was the president, so. And I think, um, I want to thank everybody who was tonight's panel. Uh, you know, we've been talking about preschool, uh, a district like preschool opportunity, trying to get universal preschool for our kids. I can't think of anything that's more important. I would hope that, that on this thing that I can't read very well, that, that we really press legislation to try to make sure that we have additional funding for, um, for, for preschool. It is so critical. Um, and, and I just want to, I was, I'm impressed, I'm still better at what we've done. I think we got it, everyone's standing in cheer for us, that was once and now I actually need to, it's just been a great job this district has. We go from Keats T-Cup to, to this, to our new elementary schools, to our, all the extra rooms that we provide for kids in our buildings that were, they were living in the basement, and we've done, we've done away with all the basement classrooms, and, I mean, it's just been exciting to me, and the list goes on, I just think it's great. And Scott, we could, but say thank you for your presentation, too.
Thank you. Yes, that's right, I'm sorry, I went to yours too. And enjoy it. Thank you. It made me feel stupid compared to my sixth grader who does that, who's in middle school.
Steve, the only last, uh, last thing is the, uh, I'm, uh... Yes, we did. I'm, um, uh, having the presence of all of, uh, of our five school boards come to that lunch with me next Friday at T-Cup, and they're going to, uh, tour the venue, so, um, that'll be fun, and, uh, I'll be interested to hear what their, their emails are discussing.
And then we also have a monitoring, we can have extra instructions.
We'll have Ms. Kruger, for sure, come, and, so, um, all it will, uh, Mr. maintain your motion for...
Mr. President, I know the board recessed to executive session to discuss initial employee contracts and performance pursuant to the non-identical personnel extension under coma, and the open meeting will resume at, what time is it? So, eight thirty, eight thirty seems safe. I think that seems safe, I think that is good, I think that's possible, I think that's doing.
Through second?
Second.
So, any discussion? Ready to vote? All favor? All vote?